Your frustrations are the same frustrations that all of us around this table have, and then it's the same frustrations that all of the superintendents in the county are having in that there's decisions that are being made that simply don't make sense. So for example, when you say you can have a casino open, but you can't open a school, for example, how do you defend that? I will share that there is also frustration on Dr. Mendoza's end. We meet with Dr. Mendoza once a week, and there's frustration there because there's lack of information coming from the governor's office to the region. The other frustration is that often we're hearing things in our region via the radio or a news broadcast without it being shared or filtered through our region. And that's a broken chain from the governor's office to the regions. So what we're promoting is that we have a voice in the region and that the governor doesn't have to dictate if all schools are open or closed. It's similar to what we've been fighting forever with Governor Cuomo in that his policies are typically a one-size-fits-all policy. So if we are, our numbers are low like they are right now, we should be treated differently as far as opening schools versus a place that may have significantly higher numbers. So we're advocating, and when I say we're advocating, I'm very vocal advocating for this every Wednesday directly to Dr. Mendoza. Next week, I'm meeting with Anna Bello and Dr. Mendoza and a representative from the governor's office for some, for things as simple as allowing graduation for us to happen outside. So I think that the frustration from us is that we need to have a voice, and our region needs to have a voice. And I believe the intent when all of this was set up was that we would, we would all be unpuzzed until we got to phase two, and then there would be regional decisions, and that's not happening. So your frustration is our frustration. My concern with updates around this is, to be quite candid, I would look like an idiot because I would share one thing with you, and I promise you this is what's happening. I would share one thing with you today, and then I would share something different with you next week. So I'll give you an example. When I spoke two weeks ago with Dr. Mendoza and said, should we be ordering thermometers, for example, in preparation for schools to open? And him being very practical, and I think he's amazing, to be quite honest, said, no, because once you have a fever, it's too late. So don't worry about thermometers. Well, now we're this week, and what you see is happening everywhere is we're taking temperature checks. So do we need to start thinking about ordering thermometers for the opening of school? So the answer I would have given you today is much different than, it would have contradicted the answer I gave you last week, and I have many, many examples of that. I think there's, there's a lot of people who are very pragmatic that are trying to figure this out, and everyone is feeling very handcuffed for being good, bad, or indifferent because the only one making decisions right now is the governor. And even including the regional task force that's been set up has, has very little merit as it relates to making decisions. So the big person making decisions right now is the governor. But we're also, as we advocate, we're advocating with the county executive and, and the health commissioner, our New York State Health Commissioner, because we do need regional control.
May I ask one other question just to follow up? Is Duffy is supposedly the head of the regional task force. Is he another person that, you know, he was the lieutenant governor for a while. Does he have Cuomo's ear as far as you know that he'd be someone worth talking to, or?
So it's, I would say yes, he's another, he's another significant player. And my concern is, I don't, I don't know if anyone has a governor's ear in this area. I think that the people that have the governor's ear are downstate people, and you're absolutely correct about Duffy being part, heading up the regional task force. I just don't know how much authority they have, but that's another person that it would make sense to, to connect with.
Okay.
Thank you.
If we can be of service to you all, let me know because we are really very much, like I said, determined that we really need to get our kids back to school, and it can be done. We really believe it can be done safely. If we didn't, we wouldn't want to do it. So thank you for your time and thanks for the, for the explanation such as, as we have it right now. Appreciate it.
Say hello to Harry when you say hi.
Clayton, if I could just chime in for two seconds, just so you know, from the board perspective, board presidents are meeting countywide, and we're discussing reopening as well. And your frustrations, we share as well, but we're having those discussions as well. We're having discussions with Dr. Mendoza, but I really look to Mike to give us the latest feedback because, as Mike was pointing out, we had a meeting with Dr. Mendoza about two weeks ago, and within three days, the whole messaging and narrative had changed. So, you know, with the ever-changing executive orders that we're hearing from the governor's office, it's very hard to plan accordingly. And also, I've been selected to be part of the New York State Task Force for the State Ed Department on reopening schools, and I can tell you that, you know, they're really looking to teachers, kind of a conglomerate of teachers, parents, board members, superintendents are all going to be involved in the conversation from the state ed level on what that's going to look like to reopen. So I'm on, on that task force. But as Mike pointed out, I think that the three people that you pointed as advocates for the, for the district are the appropriate sources.
Very well. Thank you.
Last person is Anya Coleman.
Anya, are you there?
So for, for those of you joining in right now, we've had significant storms pass through our area. Our roof is flooded. We have ceiling tiles that are falling down. We have buckets catching the water, or even the board meeting right now, and if you notice all the buckets are around me. None of the board members are situated in a spot where there's water damage. That has thrown off our live streaming. We practiced it before we came, and it worked fine, and the storm really has taken its toll on our technology. So if you were in public comment and didn't have a chance to participate, we apologize. Know that if you have a question, we're all very accessible. You can certainly email myself or our board president, and we'll get back to you. So thank you for public comment.
Thank you very much. Yes, we're going to close public comment down. And we're moving along to Board of Education reports, which are pretty light this time of year. We do have a board president's meeting coming up this Wednesday. We are meeting with NISBO representatives to discuss advocacy. So advocacy about opening schools and advocacy about state aid, all of the things that we would be looking for in the county. So that is the topic for this week. All other committees have concluded for the year. Needs to remember, we do have a summer workshop coming up on the 14th of July. Mike, are you going to report out on that, what that will look like?
Sure. Our concern right now, I guess our variable is based on what the governor's executive orders will dictate. If we are in person, more than likely, we will be the 14th and half the day on the 15th. If it's remote, then we're going to have to adjust that to probably two half-days. I couldn't imagine a full day of Zooming with everyone. We'll be inviting our instructional leadership council, all of the district's administrators, our Board of Education, our district planning team members, and our focus is going to be on reopening. We're going to need a solid day and a half along with the work we're doing currently to ensure as smooth, as smooth as possible opening for our schools.
Thanks, Mike. And then also on the 14th, which is a Tuesday, we have our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is also our board reorganization, and that will be at 5:00 PM. More details to follow on that location. It's working out so well tonight, I think. Yeah, this is great. And then the 15th, we also have reserved for a summer workshop, and that's a question mark right now. If I may have an acceptance of the record of June 9th budget vote and board election? That's again, and we're negating. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. And may I have an approval of the superintendent's contract?
Don't move.
Thank you. That's Ted with him first. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Financial report, Darren.
Good evening. Treasury report for May. We received our first quarter sales tax. That's just at the start of the pandemic, but we were still up 10% higher than last year, last year for the same quarter. We have received $81,000 of the $236,000 we billed to area school districts for health and welfare services. I would bring to your attention, if you look at the revenue report, as of May, we are down about $2.6 million in state aid receipts. So basically, the governor holding true to him withholding. We don't know for sure if we will be getting that or not. We have not heard anything. On the other side of that coin, the appropriation side of the budget is doing favorably, and we're looking at probably about $4.6 million below budget there. But again, that can change based on what actually happens with the state aid and our revenues. Moving on to the school lunch fund, obviously, we have no revenue or lunch sales during the month. If you recall, when we first went, opted out of the federal and state program, we did have the general fund help with the free and reduced lunch sales, and we got away from that in 1819 because the program was operating to be able to support itself based on early executive order from pandemic where the governor said that the general fund can once again assist the school lunch fund. We did bring over $53,000 for the first half of the school year for free and reduced lunch students. So we finished the quarter, the month, excuse me, $53,000 deficit, and we accumulated $160,000 deficit so far this year in the school lunch fund. So that completes the highlights for the Treasury report.
Thanks, Darren. Do you have a motion to approve the Treasury report?
Don't move.
Second. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, so that transitions, transitions well to what we call fund balance management. It's something that we do every year this time of the year. The law requires that prior to the close of, the actual close of the fiscal year and the audits being complete, that the district estimates its financial stance and then has the board approve what up to amounts of what could go into the various reserves that we have. Reserves being savings accounts, if you will, for specific purposes as set up by the statutory. So we have nine reserves that we have recommended. These up to amounts obviously add up to more than what we anticipate surplus to be. We estimate high because, so that we have that flexibility. We've had preliminary conversations with the district's external independent auditor on this, and he is in agreement, and we will be meeting with him again once the year is finalized and they're going through the audit. I will bring to your attention something that's new this year that's never been on there before, and it's on the bottom of the third page of the school lunch fund. Again, that refers back to the COVID-specific issues of the executive budget. So we are having that there as well to help the school lunch fund with their, with their deficit.
May I have a motion to approve the fund balance?
Don't move.
Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And another segue to the food service budget, very similar to our general fund budget. Very difficult to build a budget for next year because there are so many questions. We don't know if we're going to need to buy special equipment to change serving lines, if it's going to have impacts on staffing, if we will be serving students at all, et cetera, et cetera. So to the gentleman's comments earlier, we are planning for, how do we provide the same services that we have provided up till this point? And I want to commend the team putting this budget together because they worked really hard at one of the requirements that we put before them, and that was that we would not raise lunch prices. Even if we didn't have the pandemic, this was the year we planned on raising lunch prices. We have not done that in two years, but due to everything that's going on and what's being asked of our community, et cetera, we are not raising the eligible meal prices for students.
Do you have a motion to approve, please? Don't move. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. And next is transportation contract for Monroe One BOSI's. This is for BOSI's to transport mostly for our, our special needs students, transportation needs they might have, such as going to work-study programs and other field trips and other things that, that's part of the instructional program while they're at the BOSI's in the amount of almost $108,000.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this Siemens contract. Don't move. And now, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I think what we dealt with today with the storm kind of helped prove why we need this next thing. It's the Siemens proposal to upgrade our HVAC controls. Right now, most of our buildings are on a control system that we can do through the computer. However, for the most part, we have to do those controls through a centralized computer, just like your home computer. I don't think we're, any of us are using an operating system that's 12 years old. That's basically the case with this system. So we would like to upgrade it because we're not able to get updates for it anymore. The cost is $91,000.
Thanks, Darren. If I could just go back to the last motion, let's go with the Monroe One BOSI's. There are too many questions here. Okay. Okay, so we have Monroe One BOSI. So move second. Val? Okay. Any questions on Monroe One BOSI's? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. And then we'll take a motion for the Siemens contract.
Don't move.
Ed? Questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Human resource report, Mike.
Thank you. First, for your consideration is the professional staff report. It's lengthy, but that's normal at this time of year as we're both wrapping up this school year and looking forward to planning next year. Please let me know if you have any specific questions on any of the items.
Do you have a motion to approve the professional staff report? Don't move. Thanks, Reni. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And second, for your consideration is the support staff report, and there's a few items on, their action items, so please let me know if there's any specific questions.
May I have a motion to approve the support staff report?
Don't move.
Concerned? Questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Ace, Mike. Special education report, Elizabeth.
Yes, we have CSE and CPSE recommendations on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Mike.
There is not any need for an executive session this evening. There are four policy recommendations. I would just ask, if the board has questions, to please email Melanie and I, and we can answer anything that you have. If there's any questions right now, I would be happy to discuss or agree. Okay, just a couple of closing thoughts from me. I think it's important for everyone to understand that really, we're in the midst of one of the most complex times, I think, that our society has been in, certainly our school has been in, and we're all struggling so much. On one hand, we're struggling with lives lost, economic decline, mental health issues, all of those that are associated with, with just COVID-19. We have uncertainty about what the opening of school will look like, as you heard earlier. We have uncertainty about what will happen once we're in school during the flu season, if there is a second wave that you may have heard about. And we're also in a period of what I hope to be a transformation in thought and practices and structures and systems for our families of color specifically. Each issue within itself can draw polarizing thoughts regarding how to best handle or how to best approach. So I'm asking for the community's support in helping, helping us and helping our community process all of this in a productive way. We're all frustrated right now with what's happening with, with COVID, obviously. Administrators, parents, and teachers are currently meeting to discuss how to be prepared for different scenarios. We're all frustrated that we have received no guidance, or very limited guidance around this topic from the governor's office. Hence, we're preparing for scenarios that range from not coming back, to coming back in a hybrid model, to coming back without major restrictions. The hybrid model causes challenges to our transportation planning, our food service planning, our childcare planning, our scheduling of students and their classes, facility planning, remote and onsite learning, equity planning, meeting the needs of students of special needs, meeting the needs of our English language learners, our urban, urban students, and further challenges regarding mental health supports for our students and families. This one task alone is overwhelming, but it's happening concurrently with also advocating for other things, such as allowing our seniors to graduate. As we've been out of school, we have distributed over around $60,000 in grocery carts and over 300 laptops. I reiterate that and share that again because that's unique. It's a very unique thing for a school district and a community to step up and provide that amount of support for our families and needs. And in this midst of all this, these controversies and conflict, we are also having to deal with race and inclusivity. And I need the community to hear from me that I feel that every single marginalized group needs specific and different approaches in order for equity to truly happen. There is no one-size-fits-all approach for, for all, for all students. We have to be clever, we have to be smart, we have to be compassionate, and we have to stop playing these different political games about students based on their, their race. So as it relates to a racial unrest, I want to share that without question, all of our black lives within this community and beyond matter, period. You can't question that. We will all around this table defend that to the very end. If you're a student of color, if you're a black student, your life matters, and they matter now more than ever. And I want everyone to hear that we are committed to continue our work from last year. We're, we're committed to expand it. We, we want, we demand to have a district where race is not an issue. It can't happen. So I ask for families to talk to your kids, all 30,000 residents, talk to your kids, have conversations in your, in your kitchen about how racism needs to end, has to stop. And while you're having the conversation, I would just ask for you to think about a way to help us with that work. So I think about how I see people acting when I turn on the news or I put on social media, or even emails. I feel that it's wrought with anger and hate, and we need to get to a place of love and community. And so I would, and I don't have an answer necessarily for, for how to get there, but I ask that everyone in our community just looks inside their hearts and has a real conversation with their families about what it means to be equal and, and what it means to treat everyone evenly and, and help us. Let us be your partner because we're doing a lot of really good stuff, and, and we're far from there. But the one thing that, that we can really use is for people to champion what we're doing and, and to be with us on this ride to end racism. I would also ask for us, regardless of the topic, topics that I've introduced, is to forget about politics, is to not make unfounded accusations, to stop engaging in negative behavior, to stop name-calling on social media. We're all going through a stressful time, and the one thing that can make it more stressful, and it seems to be really easy to do, is to spread that negative tone and to spread that hate. Uh-uh, we can't have it anymore. Our community needs to come together. We, we have to come together right now. I think we're at a pivotal point, and we need your support, and your support means you need to be all in it. That means that we are asking you for, to take this serious and to talk with your, your children and your neighbors about having love in your heart and, and working with us. We have a great thing in the school district. We have an amazing community, and we can be leaders in a really, really positive thing in ending racism, ending anything negative that comes our way, but we need to work together. And I would close by saying it's easy to criticize. We all need to do this hard work together. We need to be proud of where we are, and by being proud of where we are, should be gauged on how we're acting during all of this turmoil. I have one last thing to share, and it's something kind of positive, kind of not positive. It's positive for Kim McCloskey because she's retiring, he doesn't have to tackle these big issues every day because she's done it with such dignity the last 24 years. I will share that on my record that I will not assume that Kim has a resolve like no one else I've ever had in my life. For decades, Kim has been resolute about everyone on the board to use their collective power to help children. Over her time, she has served her community in a way that all leaders need to emulate. She met, she has met with any community member that's wanted to meet with her to discuss a concern. She's also sent cards to staff members that are going through a hard time. She's sent cards to staff members who are celebrating things. She might have her own card shop at home, I'm not sure, but her heart is amazing. Kim has used her role to support sick children in our community by organizing the Rainbow Classic, sending hundreds of thousands of dollars to strong pediatrics and strong hospital. She's passed 24 budget votes. She's helped to settle many contracts, and she's accomplished both of those things in a very pragmatic and collaborative way. Kim is on 24/7, period. She's listened to feedback from community members while she's working out at 5:00 in the morning, or while she's shopping, or while she's on the phone, or while she's having dinner with Steve. Everywhere, she's been accessible to the community, and that's pretty unique. Kim has been a passionate advocate for education, and she's championed all of what our educators do so well and how important our educators are to be in front of our students. Kim has led during significant and tumultuous times, dating back to 1996. She works through crisis in her normal passion and level-headed manner, and has always helped the district become better after each result. While multiple superintendents have come and gone in Pittsburgh, it worries me a little bit. Kim has stayed. Kim has led during significant and tumultuous times dating back to 1996. She works through crisis in her normal passion and level-headed manner and has always helped the district become better after each result. While multiple superintendents have come and gone in Pittsburgh, it worries me a little bit. Kim has stayed. Kim has been the district's rock, for sure, for 24 years. Dependable, ethical, consistent, and committed. Kim has made our district a place all of us can be proud of and be thankful for. On both a personal and professional note, I want to thank you, Kim, for making me a better person and for making me a better leader. I've appreciated your focus on humanity and your focus on children, along with your conviction for doing what's right for both, despite any pushback you may receive. You leave a legacy of helping individuals and the organization in a manner that's unprecedented. Know how many minds and hearts you have touched over the years and how much you're rewarded by so many. We will miss you, and I will miss you, certainly well beyond anything my words can say right now. So thanks, Kim, for all you did. I have to. I don't have my mask on. You're welcome.
All right, thanks, Mike. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Go. I repeat, this is like it. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carried. Old business. I have old business. I might not be as eloquent as Mike, but let's try. So I also want to address a couple of the comments in my statement about, and it's our statement as a board, about some of the public comment questions. So in reflecting over the past few months, our society has experienced drastic life changes. It's clear as a society that we're awakened to the threat of a global pandemic. We're awakened by the threat of a nation full of hatred. But as we reconvene in the same room, I look around this room tonight, and although we had a windstorm and rain, we're socially distanced. But as one board, I have a sense of enlightenment tonight. We, as a board, are committed to making lasting change, to ensuring that every student feels welcome in this district by building upon our ongoing equity initiatives in the coming year and years beyond that. It's not a soundbite, that's a fact. We hear but hurt and pain. Kim and I heard but hurt and pain by our students at the protest. And we also heard it last year by our marginalized students. And we're committed to the work necessary to root out hatred and racism in our schools, in our town and village, and in our county. We're realistic, though, that we can't possibly unwrap systemic racism overnight. Instead, we're prepared for the journey and path forward to providing an educational environment that celebrates and leverages differences in all forms. Collectively, we're a seven-person Board of Education with children of our own who attend or attended our schools. We hold this district to a very high standard and adhere to our core values to provide a supportive environment for all, a focus on continuous improvement, to be progressive, and to work collaboratively. And I stress that. This is who we are, and these are the standards that we live by. We would sincerely like to thank our community for the vote of support to provide our students with the best possible education despite the uncertainty of our world today. We also look forward to welcoming Robyn Scott to the Board of Education in July, and we thank Ted Rusty for his continued dedication to serving our district. So tonight is a night of transitions and reflections. We have one of the most dedicated board members and leaders in the county who's retiring from the Pittsburgh Central School District. This is a night where we, as a Board of Education, would like to take a moment to recognize Kim McCloskey, who's stepping down from the board after 24 years, it makes me sweat even sometimes, of dedicated service to spend time with her husband Steve, finally, her son Brad, and fiance Lauren, as well as her beautiful grandchildren Mason, Avery, and John. When we think of people in our community who embody inclusivity, who embody giving back, doing more, striving to make a difference, caring for all, it's you, Kim McCloskey. So I asked our board members to provide words or phrases that reminded them of Kim's service to the board and to the greater Pittsburgh community, and this is what they had to say. Inspirational. You've had that three times, I think. Knowledgeable. She has strong convictions. Kim is a true mentor. She's courageous. She's altruistic. The true north, regardless of which direction we're coming from, Kim helps us know where we want to go. She's an energizer bunny, that to say the least. Kim is a beacon that guides our path. Kim is an example of who we would like all of our children to emulate. Kim, we know this isn't the end of your connection with Pittsburgh Central Schools. Instead, it's a new beginning. O.C. One will benefit from your knowledge and passion for public education. The Pittsburgh Foundation, Yalassan Children's Hospital, Rainbow Classic, all in the best hands with you as the fervent leader. I think back now to 2013, when I met you at Starbucks to discuss my interest in running for the board. And I remember walking away and thinking how impressed I was with your enthusiasm toward Pittsburgh Central Schools and upholding the values, mission, and vision of the district. Seven years and a few additional gray years later, I'm humbled and honored to have served on the board under your leadership, your mentorship, and your partnership. You've made all of us at this table much better people. Not gonna lie, we're gonna miss your pumpkin chocolate chip cookies, your steadfast support in difficult times, your support of almost every district event, which I'm sure you will continue. But most of all, I'm gonna miss that 5:00 AM text and or email of thoughts, advice, and be candid, your determination just to serve as my daily alarm clock. Your legacy in Pittsburgh will be felt for many years to come as you transition to this so-called retirement. We wish you health, happiness, and much laughter. We'll miss you dearly and sincerely thank you for yourself. Okay. With that, we have new business as well. So tonight is an evening to celebrate you, Kim, and we, as a collective board, decided to make a resolution in your name. So we are going to take terms, we give a resolution to you, and I'll start off. This evening, the Pittsburgh Board of Education recognizes Kim McCloskey for 24 years of dedicated service on the Board of Education. Kim has served in a manner that represents Pittsburgh Central Schools in the highest regard, as she has always served with the strongest sense of integrity, care, compassion, and professionalism. We thank Kim McCloskey for consistently reflecting the highest values, ethics, and level of transparency during these 24 years of service.
Whereas Kim McCloskey retired from the Board of Education on July 1st, 2020, after completing outstanding leadership to the district since 1993, and?
Whereas Kim McCloskey served as PTSA Vice President and President, 1993 to 1996, and?
Whereas Kim McCloskey served her first term as Pittsburgh Board of Education member in 1996, and?
Whereas Kim McCloskey has served multiple years as Pittsburgh Central Schools Board of Education President and Vice President, and?
Whereas Kim McCloskey has served.
Whereas Kim McCloskey has brought the community together through the Rainbow Classic event and has raised more than $600,000 from Yalassan Children's Hospital, and?
Whereas Kim McCloskey has. Sorry. Whereas Kim McCloskey received the PTSA Honorary Lifetime Membership Award in 1996, and?
Whereas Kim McCloskey received the PTSA Honorary Lifetime Membership Award in 1996, and?
Whereas Kim McCloskey received the Monroe County Legislature Willie W. Lightwood Youth Advocate Award in 2016, and?
Whereas Kim McCloskey received the Pittsburgh Rotary Edward Francis Community Service Award in 2010, and?
Whereas Kim McCloskey received Sandy Houston School Administrators Association of New York State Friends of Education Award in 2017, and?
Whereas Kim McCloskey received the highest award through PTSA, the Distinguished Service Award, in 2020, and?
Whereas Kim McCloskey has facilitated and participated in numerous school, county, state committees, and?
Whereas the Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the entire McCloskey family for the sacrifices they have made during Kim's 24 years of service, and?
Now, therefore, we have resolved that the Pittsburgh Board of Education pays great pleasure in memorializing the significant professional achievements of Kim McCloskey and herewith expresses a sincere gratitude for her invaluable contributions to the Pittsburgh Central School District, Monroe County, and New York State communities.
We have further resolved that this resolution be documented in the permanent minutes of the Pittsburgh Board of Education and that copies be sent to Kim McCloskey to share with her family and that in recognition of her many accomplishments, Meeting Room One shall now be renamed the McCloskey Room. A plaque will be affixed to the wall to signify the name change and to dedicate the McCloskey Room effective July 1st, 2020.
That is so cool. Here's the fun part. Thank you so much. Thank you so much with such a nice surprise. Thank you. Thank you, guys. So much for saying good, nice things.
I used to really nap like when I'm eight or one sometimes. Now I get to go to the McCloskey Room all the time. Makes me really happy. Congratulations, Kim.
Congratulations so much. I just, I made a couple of notes. I just thought I would say a couple of things and then just say some fun facts, which a couple of people maybe already said a few of them. But for all the time I've been at Pittsburgh Schools, I guess there's times, like, we all know that things get really tough and there's days that seem like years and weeks that seem like decades, probably. But overall, the time just has gone so fast. Because it's hard to believe that it's been 24 years on the board and four years before that with PTSA. And it makes us great friends and really respect the board members I've worked with and superintendents and PDTA presidents and PTSA presidents and so many teachers and principals and central office administrators. It's amazing. We have so many great people that makes this school district so good. I think the one thing that stands out for me with this district is our collaboration. And I don't think any other school district or anybody in Monroe County or the state or really in the country can talk about that, how strong that collaboration is. And it's great in good times, but when things get tough, that's when it comes through and it really makes us be able to pull through as a district. And I could say there are many things from going way back to Chianti Sublin High School and not doing the middle school to all of the diversity issues and folded kindergarten and on and on and on. And we got through all of them because of the way that we work together. And there's so many people now that I have so many friends that I never would have. So, okay, that's all I can say about that with a kind of, yeah. So I just thought this would be kind of fun. So during the time, a couple of people alluded to this. I've worked with five superintendents, two board clerks, 22 different board members, three PDTA presidents, which Duane recognized, 25 PTSA presidents, and over 30 administrators in central office and principals, and 100 that I haven't known, hundreds of teachers and support staff. And I tried to figure out the other night, I think I've attended approximately 500 board meetings. And I think I've only missed like maybe 10 or maybe 12, I'm trying to count them, in 24 years. And I loved it. And I'm gonna really miss you guys. That's all I can say. We really wanted this to be a live meeting because we felt like this was the appropriate closure for you, Kim, but you had so many people that wanted to be here with you tonight. And a lot of them showed up tonight on the bus loop to give you a honking welcome in their cars. But I just have to say, on behalf of all of those people, I know that this room would be filled with well wishes for you. So in the event that you can't have that, I'll be their voice now, but I'm sure you're gonna be hearing from beyond. That prayer was great, beyond tonight. So. That was great, yeah. We do have a little something for Steve McCloskey because we felt it was do something after 24 years of board service. And he is the only person that was allowed to come in this evening to see his wife retire officially. I think he wasn't believing that it would ever happen. And so.
I recorded it all.
So Steve is here to watch Kim officially retire. So Steve, we do have something for you. I don't know if you would like to open it here?
Will I be embarrassed?
Maybe. So Steve is an avid golfer and unfortunately.
Good Lord.
Unfortunately, his gift did not arrive on time, but it is coming this week, I'm sure. And I don't know if we can, can we show that? On the screen?
Because on the golf ball, it will say, "I finally have my wife back."
So thank you, Steve, thank you, you, thank you, Brad. Really, it's a sacrifice for your family and we have so appreciated the benefit of having him. All right. But with that, may I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, everybody.